Will the clerk call the roll, please?
Commissioner Look.
Here.
Commissioner Brassad.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Schulte.
Here.
Commissioner Meisner.
Here.
Commissioner Gamache.
Here.
Commissioner Reiner.
Here.
We are all present and accounted for. The next item on the agenda is to consider accepting the regular claims paid over $500 and purchase card claims paid for the period ending December 2nd, 2022. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Brassad. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Is there further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
That item passes unanimously. Next, we'll look for approval of the minutes from the December 1st, 2022, and December 2nd, 2022 county board meetings. Is there a motion to approve both sets of minutes?
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Meisner. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gamache. Is there further discussion to the both sets of minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Both sets of minutes are adopted as presented. Under Chair's remarks today, we have one item, and that's to recognize our county's Health and Human Services employees as part of Health and Human Services Worker Day, which is December 14th this year, as proclaimed by the governor. This day is an opportunity to celebrate and honor our caring, dedicated, and skilled HHS professionals who serve our community members each and every day, comprised in our Human Services Division for Anoka County, our five departments, and dozens of programs. The work our Human Services employees do is wide-ranging and includes, for example, Adult and Child Protection Services, Behavioral Health, Immunizations, Disability and Senior Services, Child Support, Public Health and Job Training Services. I could go on, but we'd be here for quite a while, as I named all of the programs under the umbrella of HHS. These employees truly dedicate their lives to improving health, protecting vulnerable people, and providing outstanding service to the residents through prevention efforts, program administration, and the implementation of services. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank every one of our Human Services staff. We celebrate and salute you today. They truly are the boots on the ground that meet the people of Anoka County face-to-face, one-on-one. Oftentimes, the ones that are struggling the most are utilizing some of those services, and they meet them with compassion and a heart forgiving. And for that, I thank every HHS employee, including their division manager, who's with us today, Cindy Caesar. They do fabulous work, and your department heads underneath you do as well. So, thank you. And that concludes Chair's remarks for today. We will now move into committee reports, and we'll start with the Management Committee report. And I will go to you, Commissioner West.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The regular agenda is just informational, but we have an additional agenda, and that is the Management Committee recommends approving the elimination of the unfunded positions listed by this PC number. And there are five of them.
All right, we have an item before us to eliminate unfunded positions. There are five position control numbers listed. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Brassad, and a second by Commissioner Reiner. This is item number one on your additional agenda, and for your edification, we'll be taking item two and three, the rest of the committee reports, at the end of all the rest of the committee reports. Any further discussion on the position elimination?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, yeah, I know that there was a total of 20. Fifteen are going to be retained. I'm just curious, of the five that were identified to no longer uh, or, I'm sorry, for the five identified to be removed, were they in the same area or, you know, I'm just curious about that.
I will turn to the administrator to answer the question. Rhonda, please.
Commissioner Meisner, members of the county board, the positions for elimination, two are in Information Technology, one in Finance and Central Services, one in the Sheriff's Office, and one in Social Services. And that is certainly in consultation with those department heads and recommendations by them as well.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That item passes.
And, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner West, for your final report as the Management Committee Chair.
You're welcome.
We will now move on to the Transportation Committee report. We had the opportunity to meet on Wednesday, November 30th, in Andover, at the Highway Building, and we've got a number of items for you to consider today. First, the committee recommends approval of a resolution authorizing the county engineer to negotiate the terms of a purchase agreement to acquire the property identified as PID 35, 31, 32, 43, 003 in the city of Lionel Lakes through direct negotiation with the landowner. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt Resolution Number 2022 TR 46.
There is a resolution offered, and before you, is there any further discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Gamache.
Just wondering if Joe could give us an update. This is, it seems like an odd piece here between two main roads. I guess I'll just kind of, maybe a quick history. It doesn't have to be very long, just of how it's come about and then what the plans are.
Sure. Joe?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, members of the board and Commissioner Gamache. So, my name is Joe McPherson. I'm the Transportation Division Manager and County Engineer. Uh, this parcel here, as you mentioned, is sandwiched between Otter Lake Road and then also I-35E. And so, we're currently working with Ramsey County, as well as the city of Lionel Lakes, to look at improvements to County Road J, also known as Ash Street, towards the bottom of the screen there. And as part of those improvements, we know that there's going to be impacts to some of these properties that exist along the corridor. Anytime there's a property owner that's willing to sell their property ahead of a project, we like to work with them in an open communication and a fair negotiation process as much as we can. So, in this case, the landowner has approached us and said that they are willing to sell that property. So, now is the point where we reach out to them and see if we can reach some sort of negotiated terms.
Commissioner Gamache.
So, it looks like it's probably unbuildable in this, in that piece. So, he has nothing, there's nothing on there as permanent structures right now?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, Commissioner, I, sometimes I hesitate to say unbuildable because I've seen some of the structures that can be built. I know that Caribou Coffee does a pretty interesting job of sandwiching their facilities into small parts of property. So, I think you could probably fit something on there, but in this case, it's probably not ideal, and it lends itself well to, this interchange right now, as it exists today, is what we call a half interchange. In the northbound direction, you have an off-ramp on the County Road J or Ash Street, but in the, in the northbound direction, you don't have an on-ramp. So, it lends itself well to that.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this requires a roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
That item passes. Next on your agenda, the committee recommends approval of a local road improvement program, or LRIP Agreement, Amendment Number One, with the Minnesota Department of Transportation for the engineering design services associated with the Hornsby Street realignment project in the city of Columbus. I will just say before we even move this that we'll probably, I thought we were done seeing Hornsby stuff a long time ago, but we'll probably see this another dozen times. It seems like, it seems like it's a popular project. We'll get it finished up soon. Is there a motion to approve?
Hey, Mr. Chair, I move approval of Agreement Amendment C triple zero sixty-five sixty-two eight.
There is a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gamache. Further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
And that item passes. That brings us to the Commute Solution Action item, where the committee recommends approval to enter into a sub-recipient grant agreement with the Metropolitan Council to receive congestion mitigation and air quality, or CMAC, funds for the Anoka County's transportation management organization known as Commute Solutions. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Of a motion by Commissioner Meisner. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gamache. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye. And that does conclude the Transportation Committee report for now. We'll be back later in the meeting with an additional Transportation Chair's report, but for now, we are going to go to the Finance Report and Commissioner Look.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Finance and Capital Improvements Committee met on December 8th. We came away with one action item, which is the committee recommends the county board approve contract C triple zero ninety-six eighty-two with Fratellone Companies out of St. Paul for the Jackson Street property demolition in an amount not to exceed $270,400. And this is, there's a fair amount of discussion on this at the committee in terms of the purpose of it. Obviously, this is going to be for a jail project in the event that that comes. And, and so, the discussion kind of revolved around the necessity to take it down today. Some of the conversation, I believe that Commissioner Gamache had indicated, was that it could be more expensive to take it down tomorrow. And one of my concerns was the availability of space in the county and, and the growth of, you know, need for office personnel, that sort of thing. So, I leave it with you, Mr. Chair. That's, those were the discussions, and this is the, this is the recommendation to the county board.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Look. I was unable to make that Finance Committee meeting, but I, my comment would be, I see this needing to be done whether we build a jail or not, because it's where the new parking ramp will go. We are, I think, in full agreement that we need a new parking ramp in Anoka County. Ours is crumbling and needs millions upon millions of dollars of renovation if we were to keep it around, and then it would still be a substandard ramp when we were done. So, we do need a new parking ramp, and that's what the Jackson Street property is slated for. So, even if we decide at some point that we're not building a jail, we still need a ramp. So, I think this makes sense to move ahead with this. I would entertain a motion to get it on the floor for discussion.
I will make that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Gamache. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brassad, and this is to award the contract to Fratellone's Companies for $270,400. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Gamache.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, Commissioner Look was right. We had a good discussion on this to kind of weed out some of the concerns. My main issue was that we need to take these buildings down. They're old, they're in disrepair, they would need a lot of work. We would also have to, even if we were just delayed it for a year or two years, it will be, A, more expensive, B, that'll be expensive trying to make sure no one breaks into the buildings, steals things, gets, you know, that becomes our, our issue of trying to make sure it's a safe area. And it's better to have it down, gone. Commissioner Look did bring up the fact that we might need some space, and that was a good point. My, my point to that was that we currently have open space here due to the fact of, still of COVID and people working from home. We don't have everything filled back. A lot of people are still working from home, and that goes across the entire country. So, I don't know if we're ever going to be back to that point of having this buil, building completely full. So, that gives us the space, I think, that we would need in case something should come up. So, I was comfortable with moving forward and doing it at a price that was less than what we had expected to see in the, in the actual bid. So, that was good. So, I thought, let's get it taken down, and, and then we can move forward and find out later on what we do with the new parking ramp and, and a possible new jail. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gamache. Further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
And that passes. Commissioner Look, before you move on, I forgot to ask one quick question because I wasn't at the meeting. Does this include the demolition of the, the house that's on the property, Jackson Street Properties?
I believe it does, yes.
It's the house in both, both commercial buildings. Okay, very good. Thank you.
And, and, Mr. Chair, the rest of the information here, it's informational items, but it has to do with master construction contracts that we've done here at Anoka County, and we're further evaluating some of the, what that applies to overall. So, what you, what you see there for master construction contracts will actually be coming back to us at some point later. So, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Look. That will move us to the Human Services Committee report. Commissioner Reiner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Human Services Committee met on December 8th. There were no public comments. So, we've got a few items for you this morning. First one is, one item under consent. If you have any questions on that, we'll hear that now. Otherwise, I'll move that item.
There is a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Meisner to adopt the consent agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
That item passes.
All right, now, we'll move to the regular agenda. We've got three items there. The first one under Community Corrections. First item is for the board to consider agreement with contract number C triple zero ninety-six sixty-four. This is a renewal, and this is between Minnesota Department of Corrections Correctional Facility in Lionel Lakes and the Anoka County Juvenile Center in Lionel Lakes for campus services and utility in the amount not to exceed $320,000. It's a two-year contract from the beginning of the year until the end of '24. You'll notice that there is a 27% increase on the utility increase here, and it's, but you also, you can see in the report, the schedule, it kind of goes up and down. Five years ago, it was actually up that high, too, and then it went down. Now, it's back up, and we all know why. Energy costs are up, so. I'll offer this one.
There is a motion on the floor to approve the contract. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Meisner. Further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
That item passes.
Now, we'll move to Community Correct, or actually, Public Health and Environmental Services. We've got two items there. We've got one item for the board to consider contract C triple zero ninety-six seventy-two with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency for operation of Household Hazardous Waste Program in Anoka County. This is a five-year contract from the beginning of the year until the end of '27.
Is there a motion to approve the contract?
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Gamache. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
That item passes.
And last but not least, my last item here is Public Health and Environmental Services. This is asking the board to consider to enter into an MOU contract number C triple zero ninety-six sixty-one between Anoka County Recycling and Resource Solutions and Anoka County Parks for Rice Creek Park Restoration. This is a two-year contract. I think it's $180,000, $186,000. And basically, we acquired 27 acres to expand the compost site in Lionel Lakes near Worgel, and this is to clean up and to restore some wetlands.
Is there a motion to approve?
I love it.
Commissioner Look has moved it. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gamache. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
That item passes.
Hey, Mr. Chair, that completes my report. The rest is routine and informational.
Thank you, Commissioner Reiner. Let's move on, then, to the Intergovernmental and Community Relations Committee report. Commissioner Brassad.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. IG met on December 2nd, and there is an informational item for review there. This does re, revolve around the public safety levy, and we were asking for a couple things to be met that has not happened. So, I think at this point, this is for informational purposes only.
Thank you, Commissioner Brassad. That brings us, then, to the Property Records and Taxation Committee report. To you, Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Property Records and Taxation Committee, we did meet on December 8th at 10:30. We did have public comment. I would like to read all of the folks that were able to join us of the public. That would be Derek Lynn of Ramsey, Lisa Hendrickson of Linwood Township, Channing Stowell of East Bethel, Brenda Miller of Columbus, Sue Peterson of Ham Lake, and Robert Kirchner of Coon Rapids. I also do accept all public commentary via email for folks that can't get there in the middle of the day. That email is mandy.maisner@co.anoka.mn.us. I'm going to paraphrase the comments from the public, but again, they were there voicing their concern and questions around election integrity. And for transparency, today at 11:30, we will be having a meeting to address specifically those questions. It is open to the public. There are several commissioners that are planning to attend. I also invite all of my colleagues to attend that. I do want to preface this, that this meeting, though, is specifically for this group. They have set the agenda with some specific questions, so that is what will be addressed. So, while the public is welcome to attend, there aren't going to be a Q and A from the public for that particular meeting. So, going on to actual action items, we have three before you. These are all different properties. Can I take these all at once or separately? Separately. 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 Okay, so we will start with action item 1A, which is Resolution 2022 PRT 19. This is application by the city of Ramsey for conveyance of tax-forfeited property for conditional use. This is the right-of-way for road, very standard, and I will go ahead and move that.
Resolution has been offered and is before you. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That resolution is adopted.
Thank you. On to action item number 1B. This is application for repurchase of forfeited lands by Kami Blumer. This is PIN number 25-31-23-21-0015 in the city of Circle Pines, and I will also go ahead and move this.
There's a motion on the floor for the application for repurchase of forfeited lands. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Reiner. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? That item passes unanimously.
Thank you. And for the last action item under 1C, this is Resolution 2022 PRT 20, application by the Linwood, or, excuse me, by Linwood Township for conveyance of tax-forfeited property for conditional use. Again, this would be for right-of-way. And this is PIN number 27-34-22-13-0024, and I will also go ahead and move this.
The resolution has been offered and is before you. Is there any further discussion of the resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. The rest of the committee was informational, but as you guys know, I do always like to share. So, for informational item number two, the committee received an overview of the property assessment values, trends, and sales ratio. So, I'm going to share a few bullets. They're quite technical, so bear with me. The majority of the truth in taxation phone calls that were fielded were related to residential properties and the loss of homestead market valuation exclusion, and this phases out at the value of 400 and 413,800 of value. Estimated pay of 2023 taxes, okay, are based on the 2022 assessment, which reflects our estimate of value as of January 2nd of 2022. So, that estimate of market value is based on sales that occurred in 2020 and 2021 per Minnesota statute. Everything is a look back, so that is a little bit confusing, but that is statute, and that's what we do every year. And the Assessors' Office is busy reviewing and analyzing trends, sales trends, ahead of the 2023 assessment. We are properly accounting for the impact rising interest rates and having on the real estate market. So, our staff is really crunching numbers to predict and to mitigate as much as possible. And for informational item number three, the committee reviewed and recapped a summary of the November 8th, 2022 state general election, a few statistics around that. The turnout for the 2022 was 68%, 2020 was 93%, 2018 was 76%. In the absentee category of 2022, we had a turnout of 22.5% in 2020, 55%, and in 2018, 21%. Essentially, what we're looking at is, everything has gone back to the pre-pandemic results in terms of absentee participation. So, for the canvassing board, it was unanimously voted to select six precincts for the post-election review instead of the required four. I do want to state that this was a good faith effort on the Anoka County Board to address some of the concerns that had been brought up. So, that, the results of that was a 0% error by machines. We also added an additional race, which was the Secretary, Secretary of State. Again, good faith effort. That race also was a 0 error by the machines. The only adjustment, caveat, was due to voters making their, their, their marks outside of the ovals, and so, but that was still considered error-free. And as far as recount, we happen to have just an organic recount, which was requested from the mayor's race in the city of Lexington. That recount also showed a 0, or 0% error, meaning 100% accuracy. So, again, these are the stats. I will say that the error rate since machines have come on board has been 0%. So, that has been significant for quite some years now. The next scheduled meeting is yet to be determined, so January is when we're going to be setting all of our committee assignments and the timing with that. So, stay tuned for that, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Meisner. Next, we'll go to the Public Safety Committee Chair report. Commissioner Brassad.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would recommend approval and execution of the 2023 law enforcement contract with the city of Columbus for a term of January 1st, 2023, through December 31st, 2023, in the amount of $428,496. And I'll move that.
There's a motion before you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, this requires a roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Opposed.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
That item passes.
And our last law enforcement contract for the year is looking for approval and execution of the 2023 law enforcement contract with the city of East Bethel for a term of January 1st, 2023, through December 31st, 2023, in the amount of $1,268,038. January 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2023, in the amount of $1,268,038. And I'll move that.
There's a motion before us. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gamash. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Reisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Opposed.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye. And that item passes.
The next item is that I would recommend adoption of Resolution 2022 PS 10, which is accepting dedicated donation from AKC Reunite, and this donation is in the amount of $7,500 and will be used by the Sheriff's Office for training of K-9.
Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll move it.
I have the offer of the resolution by Commissioner Look. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That item passes.
And the final item is that I would recommend adoption of Resolution 2022 PS 11, accepting dedicated donation from St. Paul and Minnesota Foundation. This is a $20,000 donation to the Sheriff's Office for support of the K-9 program. I'll offer that resolution.
Resolution has been offered by Commissioner Brastad. Is there further discussion? It's a very generous donation.
It is.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That item passes. Commissioner Reisner.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I just wanted to make a comment before you closed out the committee report. Oh, okay, thank you. I didn't make the comment, even though we talked about it in IG. I just wanted to acknowledge there are several chiefs of staff here. I appreciate that you're here. And then just my comment about the JLEC and the MOU is my sincere desire that we can work this out and move forward. But again, thank you for your time for being here. I just wanted to acknowledge that. Thank you.
As a point of clarification, I think you mean chiefs of police.
I did. What did I say?
Chief of staff.
I'm sorry. I meant chiefs of police. Thank you for that correction.
They do have staff, though.
But they're probably not here. Thank you, Commissioner Reisner. Back to you, Commissioner Brastad.
That concludes my chair report number one.
Thank you, Commissioner Brastad. Let's now move back into our additional agenda and the committee reports there. Item 2A through D, we'll start with the Transportation Committee Chair Report. And we have two items for you there. Consider approval of a resolution supporting the city of Columbia Heights Active Transportation Infrastructure Program funding applications to support the construction of a shared-use path on 44th Street from Main Street to Central Avenue. Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'd like to offer that resolution.
Resolution has been offered by Commissioner Reisner. I think we'll turn to Joe for just a quick explanation of what both of these items are so we can be fully knowledgeable when we cast our votes.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, my name is Joe McPherson. I'm the Transportation Division Manager and County Engineer. So both of these action items before you relate to MINDOT's Active Transportation Infrastructure Program. So that's a mouthful, but that is a program that they have right now encouraging active lifestyles and so within communities. So both of these cities are looking forward to extending shared-use paths within their communities. And so this first item here with Columbia Heights, they're actually extending a shared-use path from the termini of one of the projects that we submitted through our Met Council Regional Solicitation Application Process, and we're going to receive funding for, and that's that railroad humpyard bridge in Fridley. We're actually going to improve the pedestrian accommodations on that bridge. And so at the termini of that project is right where they leave off, and then they're going to carry forward on 44th Avenue and extend that over to Trunk Highway 65, Central Avenue.
Very good. Further discussion? Commissioner Reisner.
Yeah, just thank you for working with the city of Columbia Heights. Really appreciate that.
Commissioner Look.
Mr. Chair, thank you. As members know, I sit on the Transportation Advisory Board, and part of the, kind of the, some of the agendas maybe on the Transportation Advisory Board is to take what would be road dollars and transfer it over to bike and pad. And so the question I have as it relates to this is, where did these dollars come from that MINDOT's using? Is it being diverted from what they would normally use for roadway projects? Is it federal dollars mandated that be spent on bike and pad? Or what is the, kind of the background on this particular program that they're offering? AT Infrastructure Program?
Yeah.
Joe.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Look, good question. So to my understanding is, is that this was a legislative directive given to MINDOT. I believe it started in 2017. Money was set aside. I'm not sure what, from which fund it was. I'll have to look into that, but essentially, it was a legislative directive starting in 2017, and then MINDOT developed this program, and they actually administer the funds and the solicitation.
For sure, Look.
Mr. Chair, I want to be clear, I do not oppose active lifestyles. I think it's great. I do oppose diversion of dollars to these type of programs because you can name any road you want to and all the, you know, the congestion issues, accidents, whatever you want to look at. We're actively trying to get towards zero deaths is a big program that we're trying to work towards because we know areas where intersections are terrible, whether it's vehicle traffic, whether it's safe routes to school, whatever it may be. And yet, there's this continual push, and it's evident here by the legislature, continual push to put an emphasis on bike and pad, which is great, but not at the expense of roads. And we know that we have extensive road needs. I think the last evaluation done on projects needed to be done was $8 billion in the state of Minnesota. So, I mean, this is somewhat like rearranging the furniture on the deck of the Titanic. So from that standpoint, while I'm not opposed to active lifestyles, while I'm not opposed to this particular project, I am opposed to the diversion of dollars that I see happening on a regular basis.
Thank you. Commissioner Look. Commissioner Reisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate this discussion. I do not sit on transportation, but as you guys know, I attend pretty regularly just to educate myself around that. And generally speaking, I agree with you in terms of a huge shift of funding, and I appreciate, I'm glad that you said you still support this project, though, because the one thing about as a county, though, our county districts look very different. So for my area, Columbia Heights and Fridley, it's a high density. We do need multimodal. We do need transit. And I appreciate throughout the rest of the county, it's not the same. So that is always the balancing act. But again, I appreciate that you support this project. Thank you.
Commissioner Look.
Mr. Chair, let me be clear, I support active lifestyles. I do not support the diversion of dollars for this project.
Further discussion? Commissioner Gamash.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just hopeful that, and I'm not sure if it's in the plan, and you may not even know what exactly their whole plan is, but one of the questions I know, and one of the concerns regarding 47 and in some cases, Central Avenue, would be pedestrian bridges going across those two roads. And I know they've done that on Central as you go further to the north of 44th. So I'm kind of hopeful that if this is going to be a central path, that one of the things they look at at that 44th and University would be a pedestrian bridge because I know some state reps that have represented, Connie Bernardi has been pushing for that in a number of areas along University on 47. So hopefully, they'll consider that as something that would be very helpful.
Joe.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Gamash, to that point, I think it's to the benefit of the community to understand, too, that MINDOT currently is underway with a, they're calling it a Phase 2 PEL study, which is a Planning and Environmental Linkages Study along both the corridors of Trunk Highway 47 and Trunk Highway 65 for that very reason. There's been a lot of pedestrian and bicyclist crashes that have occurred on there. Several of them have ended up in fatalities. So with that, MINDOT's been studying that. They've included the communities along there. So to your point, this project should tie into that study as well.
Thank you, Joe.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, the resolution is before you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Aye.
We have one opposed. The item passes. The second item for your consideration is very similar. It's approval of a resolution supporting the city of Ramsey's Active Transportation Infrastructure Program funding application to support the construction of a shared-use path on 161st Street from Armstrong Boulevard to Varialite Street and on 167th Avenue from Now Then Boulevard to Quicksilver Street. And again, these are supporting their applications. It's not necessarily awarding any projects or anything like that. This is just supporting their application to MINDOT. Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer the resolution.
Resolution's been offered by Commissioner Gamash. Is there further discussion?
Just one.
Commissioner Gamash.
Thanks. I should have asked this before because it was the same thing in the last one. Shared-use path, that's not an off-the-road necessarily trail, or is it?
Joe.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, so a shared-use path is typically off the road. It's an off-road trail. It's a fancy name for bike and pad, but it's typically off the road. If it was on the road, a lot of times, they call those bike lanes or pedestrian shoulders, that type of thing.
Good, then I'm glad I moved the resolution.
Commissioner Reisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I want to say, too, the shared-use path, the width of it can really vary quite a bit, too. And then it could be marked with lines or not, so it, there's a whole gradation of that once you get into it, but thank you.
Resolution is before you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Aye.
We have one opposed. That item passes. That concludes the Transportation Chair Report. We will now move to the Information Technology Report. Commissioner Gamash.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The IT Committee met on December 13th, and we have two action items. We had no public comments at the meeting, but the first action item is the committee recommends that the county board approve a purchase for Insight Public Sector, Inc. of Herndon, Virginia for digital network architecture, DNA, including hardware expansion and professional services in the amount of $80,541.07 and a five-year DNA enterprise agreement in the amount of $527,726 for a total of $608,267.07. Susan Vreeland, our director, is here, and I will turn it over to Susan to give you a brief update on the, on this professional services contract.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the county board. I'm Susan Vreeland, the county's Chief Information Officer. Commissioners, this is the outcome of a discussion we had earlier this summer when we were looking at capital expansion of the network here at the county. And what this tool really does is allow the baseline for us to begin segmenting our network and providing some additional monitoring. Gives us the ability to keep a closer eye on everything coming in and out of the county, and this is really the baseline for that next level of cybersecurity we've been working towards.
Thank you, Susan, and I'll move this.
There's a motion before you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Reiner. Further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Reisner.
Aye.
That item passes.
Item number two is the IT Committee recommends that the county board approve Contract C 005772 with Axon Enterprise, Inc. of Delaware with its principal, oh, excuse me, its principal place of business, apparently, is in Scottsdale. They figured this out. For a five-year agreement in the amount of $198,900 with a change order of $19,890 for a total not to exceed $218,790. This is a contract with Axon that, they work with the police departments and the sheriff's departments, correct? Yeah. And I'll let you go ahead. It's the body camera guys and all of that things, and part of what we're trying to do is bring it all together into one, but this is just the starting point.
To a certain extent, Commissioners, Mr. Chair, members of the county board, this particular purchase, although access does a lot of work in the public safety arena, this particular piece is really dedicated to the county attorney's office. And so they can certainly talk to those other Axon technologies. But one of the things we did for the attorney's office in around the March-April timeframe is we started a pilot with one of Axon's tools called Evidence.com to help manage the amount of data coming in and out of the attorney's office. The expansion of video files and picture files and large data files makes it a challenge for the office to get that in and out through standard email. And so we started a pilot with this particular product to address that issue. It's been very successful. They allowed us kind of cost-free to extend that pilot past the original 90 days. And so now that we've really tested that technology, and we know that it's in good working order, we need to make that purchase. And so what is before you today is a five-year agreement to make that happen. It is unlimited storage, which was something that was interesting to negotiate. So there's a small change order in there in case we want to enhance the product, but the office will have the ability to store and disseminate that data for five years at no limit storage at this point.
And I apologize, I was off on that. I realize they're tied together, but at the same time, this is just the part that goes with the attorney's office.
Correct.
So that we can make sure that all of those body camera videos, car camera videos, and all the other type of information is, has a place to be stored within the attorney's office.
Correct.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
A motion by Commissioner Gamash. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Reisner. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Reisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
That item passes.
And that concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Well, Commissioner Gamash, while your mic is hot, why don't we pick up the Parks Report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Parks Committee met on December 13th as well. We had no public comments at that meeting. We were at the Bunker Hills Activity Center. The first item is recommends the county board approval, approval of the license agreement with the Rapids Archery Club for the use of the Bunker Hills Archery Complex. This has been a great contract, a long-term partnership that we have had with the archery club over the years, dating back to 1977, and so it has been a long-term contract. This one is entering into the agreement that would be a five-year term with an option to extend with mutual agreement of both organizations. And I just want to reach out and say thank you to the archery club. They've done a great job in doing what they do, but I want to thank them for when we had to do the COVID shots and we had to have a place to do it. That was the place that fit really well because it was a central part of the county in the northern side, and we had a nice, large area, and I appreciate that. They may not have been overly happy with us taking it back for a little while, but they stepped up and did it, and I appreciate the working with them, and we've had a great relationship. And Jeff, I don't know if you wanted to add any more to that, but it's been a great relationship for a long time.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good morning. My name is Jeff Perry, Park Director for Anoka County. And yeah, I would, we're very fortunate to have a partner in Rapids Archery Club because they deliver so many services on behalf of Anoka County. They do programs, tournaments, open shoots, et cetera, for the public. So there's great public value in this agreement, and I echo Commissioner Gamash's sentiments that they're very much appreciated, and we're looking forward to our continued work together.
Commissioner Reisner.
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'm sorry, I can't remember how long you said the partnership was, but I just, out of happenstance, happened to be in that building when they were having their archery, and so I got to try it, and I believe that I prefer recumbent bow, but it was really fun and actually pretty educational. They were great to kind of show me how it all worked. And I'm sorry, how many, how many years did you say that they've been a partner?
Forty-five years.
Forty-five years. Fantastic.
I think you mean recurve.
Oh, is that what I mean?
I have a motion by Commissioner Look to approve the license agreement as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Reinert. Is there further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That item passes.
A second item is to adopt Resolution of Support Number 2022 PRK-09 for preventing and reducing the spread of aquatic invasive species in the amount of 134,182. This goes back to the 2014 omnibus tax bill that the governor signed, providing these aids to the counties from the Department of Revenue to assist counties in doing the work that we do at the boat launches and the boat landings, also to make sure that people understand, are educated as to cleaning their boats properly so that we don't have the spread of invasive species throughout our lakes. And we have every boat landing, every public boat landing in Anoka County, will have somebody there when you're bringing your boat in or taking it out, and it has done a great job of educating people. We've also used some of the money to help some of the lake associations do some of that work as well, which was a good, which was a good addition because they needed some help there as well. But I think we've had some successes, and we want to keep the program going. And I'll move it.
Resolution has been offered and is before you. And if I understood correctly when I read this, there was no increase in infestation or spread last summer. So that's good news. If we can have continued progress like that and then eventually figure out a way to reduce it, not just keep it from spreading, but actually get it to recede, I think we'll be in a much better position. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? That resolution is adopted.
Next item is to consider recommend, that, to consider the county board consider the adoption of Resolution 2022 PRK-10, accepting a very generous gift once again from Canexus Energy in the 2020, in 2022, to fund natural and cultural historical programming at Worgo Nature Center. They have donated again $25,000, which was very generous, and they've been doing this for a number of years. As a matter of fact, this is the 34th consecutive year that they've sponsored this. So we want to reach out to Canexus Energy, and I believe we will be sending a letter to them if we already haven't, thanking them once again for this very generous offer. This programming at Worgo Nature Center teaches young people about natural history and things regarding, everything from what happened decades ago in their, in these programs that happened centuries ago, and how Minnesota grew, and how everybody who lived here and what they did, and it's just a great program. And having Canexus Energy as part of that is a very valuable asset to the counties, so we thank them once again.
Commissioner Reinert.
And I just want to add to that, too. This is a great program. It's been going on for a long time. We do thank Canexus Energy for the donation. But just to give you the scale on, you know, how many people this program has, there's over 12,000 kids that go through this program. It's a $25,000 donation, so it's two bucks a kid. I mean, not only a great program, but very economical.
Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'd offer it.
Commissioner Reinert has offered the resolution. It's now before you. Is there further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Resolution is adopted.
The next item, Mr. Chair, is that we recommend the county board approve a license agreement for, a lease agreement, excuse me, for golf carts at Shawmanee Golf Course. That contract is C-009690. The golf cart currently expires on December 31st of this year. Originally a three-year lease with an option to buy at the end of that. This lease was extended for the 2022 season due to supply chain issues. The original lease was $38,000. After four seasons, the fleet is having several mechanical issues, and a new fleet is recommended. The new proposed lease will be 70 carts, or 70 vehicles, or a four-year term. That's 65 golf carts, two ranger carts, three beverage carts, and one utility cart. The contract amount will be $40,600 per year. As I said last time, it was $38,000 per year. And we have no purchase option at the end of the lease. It was decided that with all the work that needs to go into it, there really wasn't much of a reason to offer that or put that into the contract. We're hoping, and I don't think we're 100% sure yet, on windshields and the possibility of USB ports, which we hear a lot from people at golf that like to have USB ports so they can plug in their speakers or their phones or whatever else. So, or we're hoping that maybe those, they, they will come through. I don't know, Jeff, if you've heard any more since our meeting, for sure that we're getting that or not?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Gamash, no updates, but the request has been made.
Good. And I'll move that.
There's a motion before you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Meisner. The question I have is, is there an out in this lease in case our overzealous legislature mandates electric golf carts? I'm assuming these are gas-powered because it's cheaper, even though they pollute our environment. Don't get me wrong, I'm still all for it. But our overzealous legislature has been overreaching lately, and it's not out of the realm of possibility that they mandate electric. And as long as we can get out of this lease, if that happens, I would be okay with that. I know switching to electric is expensive. We did it in Coon Rapids when I was on the city council. We switched Buckle Hills to electric, a far superior product, much better for the golfers, much better for the golf course, better for everybody. It's just a little more money, well, a lot more money, to set up the charging stations. I just think, you know, with all the hysteria over climate change, we have to be prepared for what jurisdictions above us enforce upon us. So I just want to make sure we're thinking about that here. Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's so funny. I was, I wasn't going to comment about our overzealous legislature, but I was going to ask you if there was conversation or research about electric fleet. And then you mentioned you did that, or not you, but the city of Coon Rapids did that. So yeah, I know that the investment is definitely higher upfront, but then I believe, over time, though, it, it is actually pretty economical. But just out of curiosity, have you researched this? Forget about if it's mandated or not. I'm just curious if you are looking at that or having conversations with other places that have adopted an electric fleet.
Mr. Perry.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Meisner, members of the board. Yes, we have done research with electric, and we do have those numbers for the infrastructure investment as well as the overall operational investment as well. It's significantly higher. And we will continue to update those estimates moving forward. And Commissioner Schulte, to your question, there is a termination clause in this particular agreement in the event that some things happen to change in terms of state mandated requirements.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying, or this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reinert.
Aye.
Item passes.
The next item, Mr. Chair, is the county board approve a Resolution 2022 PRK-11, authorizing a cooperative agreement with the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources for planks at the Centerville Boat Launch. This is Anoka County Contract C-4, C-00009663. I do believe I see 400 there. Park staff has been working with the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources on the cooperative agreement that will provide 20 5-foot-by-12-foot concrete planks for the double launch at Centerville Lake within Rice Creek Chain of Lakes Park Reserve. Park staff is working on the design plans for road construction, and part of the project, part of the project will reconstruct the boat launch. This agreement will provide the planks free of charge to the county with the caveat that their launch remain free and is maintained for 20 years, and that is definitely a part of our plan. So we are thankful for having, getting this free of charge from the Department of Natural Resources, and it will be implemented with the construction of the road project. Go ahead.
I'll offer it. Resolution has been offered by Commissioner Look. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reinert.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
That item passes.
And then the final item that we had on there, items for approval, the board to approve a contract with Vit and Company Incorporated for the Worgo Nature Center Improvement Project. The county was able to complete the Worgo Nature, a Worgo Entrance Road Project under budget, which left funds remaining in the grant. The grant was amended to include slope stabilization and an ADA access to the nature play area. The Parks Department worked with TKDA to design the project, which was sent out for quotes. Four quotes were received. Vit and Company appears to be the lowest, and their quota amount was $109,160, with our engineers estimate of $116,000 for the project. So we got under the estimate of the engineers, so we are approving that and hoping that the board will as well.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Reinert. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Meisner. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reinert.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
And then one informational item that I just wanted to touch base on is that, as you know, we had some problems with the Coon Creek, the bridge study over of the dam site, where we had the bridge go out. The abutments were bad, so we had to block off the trail that went around the dam, the county dam park. And the bridge over Coon Creek needs to be replaced, so we got the study back, and we have a couple options that we're going to move forward on to not only place the bridge with a wider, a longer bridge, so that'll be stable longer. I mean, the study that came, that did come to us showed that the Mississippi River has flooded five of the last six years or whatever it is, so that's part of the problem that we have there. But we want to keep the trail along the river because of just the aesthetics of walking along the river. And then also moving the other trail that's just on the other side of the Coon Creek Bridge away from the creek a little bit because of washout. So we will be coming forward with that, but that'll be down the road a little bit. But at least it gets us some opportunities to reach out to Met Council and other funding places we can get money for that. And hopefully we'll get that bridge back open and the trail around the entire dam park will, county dam park will actually be open. Sorry about that. That concludes my report. I got to stop talking.
Thank you, Commissioner Gamash. We'll move on to the Public Safety Chair Report, and Commissioner Brassad.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would recommend approval of a contract for the purchase of technology solutions from Axon, Inc. in the amount of $2,890,700 with a change order of 10%, $289,700 for a total of $3,179,770. This is an item that is in our 2023 CEP. Our sheriff's office, county IT and procurement have been working with Axon over the past eight months to negotiate and draft a comprehensive contract and statement of work. We are aware that effective January 1st of 2023, it looks like there will be an increase substantial, about $800,000. So for that reason, we're kind of expediting the process and asking for the board's earlier approval. I've asked Commander Lenzma, you're here to talk about what this technology does, and he'll explain that to us.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Paul Lenzmyer, my commander, with the Anoka County Sheriff's Office. And this is a comprehensive solution to a lot of our law enforcement technologies that we have within the sheriff's office. We've had mobile cameras in our squads since early 2000s. We've had three CIP or CEP projects over the last 20 years that have brought us into modern technology uses with body cameras and squad cameras. We started with cassette tapes that were in our squads and put them in a Rolodex, and sometimes they would work, sometimes they wouldn't. We moved to digital then about mid-2000s. We are on our second version of mobile squad car camera solutions, and we are in our last year, just finished our last year of body cameras, so we've been active in body cameras. What's before you is, like I said, a comprehensive solution that addresses squad cameras, body cameras, taser, less than lethal weapons, along with iCloud storage, which you heard earlier, Evidence.com is the storage capacity, which brings everything under one umbrella for the sheriff's office, allows us to transfer data easily with the county attorney, our prosecutors, and a very robust technology for the sheriff's office.
Very good. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
A motion by Commissioner Brassad. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, this requires a roll call vote.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reinert.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
That item passes.
And that concludes my report.
Okay, and then the last item on this particular agenda is approving a contract for the renewal of cyber liability insurance for a policy term of January 1st, 2023 to January 1st, 2024, from Coalition Incorporated through the Arthur J. Gallagher Company. Is there a motion to approve the contract?
So moved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Gamash. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brassad. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reinert.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
That item passes. That'll bring us back to our regular agenda and to Item 8, where we'll consider approving a contract, which is an employment agreement between Dr. Angelique Quinn-Piper and the county of Anoka for medical examiner services effective January 1st of 2023 through December 31st of 2026. Is there a motion to approve the contract?
So moved.
Commissioner Brassad, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reinert.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
That item passes. Next, we will consider a resolution reappointing Dr. Angelique Quinn-Piper as Anoka County Medical Examiner. This is Resolution 2022-154. Is there an offer of the resolution?
Mr. Chair, I'd move to adopt Resolution 2022-154, reappointing Dr. Angelique Quinn-Piper as Anoka County Medical Examiner.
Resolution has been offered and is before you. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That item passes. Next is Item 10 on your agenda. Committee appointments. We'll consider appointing Dave Pavloni, Pavloni, to the Board of Adjustment for a term ending December 31st, 2024. We will take these individually. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
There's a motion by Commissioner Reinert. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gamash. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That's unanimous. Next, we'll consider reappointing Alan Hamel and appointing Margaret Anderson as an alternate to the Personnel Board of Appeals for three-year terms ending December 31st of 2025. I would be happy to move that. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brassad. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That is a unanimous vote. See on your agenda, consider appointing Jess Robertson to the Rice Creek Watershed District Board of Managers for a three-year term ending January 17th of 2026. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Gamash. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Reinert. Is there further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner West.
I would just like to let everyone know that Ms. Preiner sent a letter to Anoka County withdrawing her name from consideration for this, and I think that I'd just like to thank her for 15 years as the chair, or I don't know if she was the chair the whole time, I think she was, on that board, and we are not likely to have a chair again. She's, a lot of institutional knowledge has gone with this, but she was served as well and ran a fantastic budget as well.
Thank you, Commissioner West. Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Commissioner West, for sharing that because I did want to make sure that that was acknowledged as well. Just for transparency's sake, I will be supporting this appointment, but I did voice concerns about potential conflicts of interest because Jess Robertson is a Blaine City Council member. However, we did get information back, and it did conclude that there wasn't a conflict of interest. So I did just want to, again, just be transparent about my initial concerns. But again, I will be supporting this at the end of the day. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think for the public's edification, we can say that our attorneys came back to us with the thought that there is no conflict of interest if there's no financial gain. Although she may serve on the Blaine City Council and she may vote on Blaine projects, as long as it's not her property or a family member's property for financial gain, she can still vote in that capacity on the Watershed District. Attorney Palumbo, if I've misstated that, please correct me.
No, Mr. Chair, you are correct. There is no legal impediment to the appointment of Jess Robertson. Should any sort of conflict arise, that will be between the Watershed District itself and Jess Robertson to resolve.
Thank you, Attorney Palumbo. Commissioner West.
I'm not trying to be a stinker, but I sat on the ACAP board for many years, and I always had to abstain, and I had no personal connections with any of... had to abstain, and I had no personal connections with any of ACAP votes. So is that different?
Attorney Palumbo.
Well, it's kind of a difficult question to answer, Commissioner. You know, you're asking for an opinion on all those votes that came up regarding. I think it was safer for you to abstain from those votes, just in the event that your association with that organization could have personally profited. Here, we have a government agency which would not personally profit from any of the votes. So I supported you certainly in your abstaining, but here, I think is a slightly different matter. Okay?
Thank you. Commissioner Brassad.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too agree with Commissioner Meisner and her first inclination that it seemed a little bit off. And I feel that it's a little bit more about perspective, you know, what the residents and people will see as a potential conflict. I guess I would never recommend any of the city council members in my district to sit on a watershed. They're two separate boards that do really good work. So while I'm not against Councilmember Robertson doing this, I just think the perspective isn't great.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That item passes unanimously. Item D, consider reappointing Ann Ranton and Lee and Paula Kostic to the Minnesota Extension Committee for three-year terms ending January 2026. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Brassad. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Look. Is there further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, sorry, Commissioner Look.
Mr. Chair, let me just say I served with them on this extension committee, and they both do outstanding work. So thank you for their work.
Very good. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes. The last thing on your agenda is to consider appointing Tracy Strombeck to the Library Board for a term ending December 31st, 2025, representing District 4, as recommended by myself. Is there a motion to approve? I'll move it. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So is Ms. Strombeck, is she moving or planning to move?
Not that I'm aware of.
Because, so she is in not your district, but in Commissioner Gamache's district? She...
I believe she lives in District 5. That's accurate.
Okay. The reason that I'm asking too, I'm just going to be completely frank. I was really surprised to see her as a candidate. She was, you know, Commissioner Gamache's opponent, and we just came off of a really tough election, all seven of us. So I was surprised of all the people that would qualify, that she would be here.
Well, first, she called me and asked if she could serve in a volunteer capacity somewhere so that she could stay deeply engaged in the community. She likes her community of Inoka County and wanted to stay engaged and be a part of the process. And I was having trouble finding a new library appointee from my district, and our policy in Inoka County is you can appoint from anybody in the county to serve, as many have. Commissioner Gamache has done that a number of times himself. So it's actually a library appointee early on. Commissioner Gamache had appointed from a different district, and then more recently, a public health board person. And this has nothing to do with politics. This is about people in the community that want to be engaged, that want to do the work, and fill out an application. Is qualified, and it's my appointment to that board. Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just follow-up comments. So I'm just going to go back to what Commissioner Brassad was talking about with optics. So I'm sure that there's nothing technically wrong with Ms. Strombeck's application or her desire to serve, but I just don't feel comfortable supporting this, again, given that she was Commissioner Gamache's very strong opponent right after a very difficult election. So thank you.
Further discussion? Commissioner West.
I'd just like to comment that library board appointees, they serve a very good purpose, but they are low-profile. It's not going to get her any points to run again. I mean, she might decide to, I don't know, but it's, that's not going to help her.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Look.
Mr. Chair, I just want to comment on this, that I think we need to be cautious that because people choose to run against us, we probably shouldn't hold that against them at any point moving forward. I don't think that that's becoming of the Board. I don't think it's becoming of any particular commissioner. And, I mean, while it does, you know, seem maybe a little strange that you can't find somebody in Coon Rapids, as large as Coon Rapids is, I do know that from my personal experience in appointing library board members, it's maybe not on everybody's top 10 list of want-to-do things, you know? So finding someone can be a little difficult, and of course, with everyone as busy as they are, adding one more item to their agenda is, can be problematic. So I would certainly not want to hold anything against Ms. Strombeck. She had a, she had a right to run. Everybody has a right to run. And whether or not, you know, they choose to run again, that's really not within our control either, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Look. And I will comment that when somebody reaches out to an elected official, when I was on the City Council and now on the County Board, expressing interest in volunteering for a commissioner, a volunteer position, to turn them away is untenable. I mean, if you have a position for them, you find it. It's when they're making that call to be involved to better serve their community, I very rarely have ever said no. Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I do appreciate your comments, Commissioner Look. I 100% agree. This is America. Anyone can run. I just think that the courteous thing would be that the commissioner of question would be the one to offer that and not a different colleague. So that's just my opinion, though. Thank you.
Commissioner Reiner.
I would just like to say I'm trying to find a library board appointment. If there's anybody out there that wants to serve, give me a call. Once a month, Monday nights.
It's hard.
Further discussion? Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And then can we have a roll call vote on this?
We can.
Thank you.
It's been requested. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Nay.
Commissioner Gamache.
Abstained. That item passes. With nothing else to come before the County Board, we are adjourned. Your HRA will meet in here, and let's do it right at the top of the hour.
Commissioner Schulte.
Rhonda.
Last meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm going to call the meeting back to order for a moment. I...
Hold on, hold on.
Past an important part of the meeting.
Don't go, don't go, don't go, don't go.
Everybody stay.
Brought the meeting back to order. We're going to start over from the beginning.
Before we end our meeting today, we're going to take some time to recognize three individuals who have spent many years of their lives in service to Inoka County. Commissioner Robin West, County Sheriff James Stewart, and County Attorney Tony Palumbo. All three are retiring at the end of this year, and I can say it's been a pleasure to work with each of them during my tenure on the Board. To kick off our retirement recognitions, I'm going to start with the Inoka County Sheriff, James Stewart. He's worked in Inoka County Sheriff's Office since 1994 and has been sheriff since 2011. As his career progressed, he developed his leadership skills and became known as a national speaker, presenter, and instructor, who has provided leadership in a wide array of challenging environments. He's been tasked as a consultant and advisor for developing national policies, training, and reform efforts for law enforcement in partnership with Department of Justice, the National Institute of Corrections, and the White House. During his 30-plus-year career in law enforcement, Stewart advanced through the ranks and had many different responsibilities, including being a supervisor and a command staff member, where he was responsible for the supervision and oversight of patrol, field training operations, K-9, honor guard, and civil process units. He oversaw the Office of Professional Standards, the SWAT team, and later, the patrol and administrative divisions before being elected as sheriff. Some of Sheriff Stewart's awards include the Magnus Prinzip's Leadership Award, the National Command and Staff College, and the Criminal Justice Commission for Credible Leadership Development. He was nominated for the National Sheriff of the Year and awarded the Medal of Merit by the National Sheriff's Association in 2015, 2016, and 2019 for his contributions to the community and the field of criminal justice. He was also given the President's Award by the Minnesota Sheriff's Association in 2018 for working unselfishly and tirelessly for the good of the state of Minnesota and its citizens. Sheriff Stewart, would you join us at the podium for a few words?
Thank you, Mr. Chair Commissioners. The fact that I'm able to stand here today is nothing short of a miracle when I think of the dysfunctional, poor, moved-a-lot kid out of St. Paul that I was destined to become, and what path I could have ended up on. It was nothing shy of the grace of God to open a lot of doors and create opportunities. And as I learned early on, I developed a vision and developed a passion for public safety and for service to others, and apparently it worked out. As you go down that type of path, you just try to say yes. You try to open your mind and your heart and to see where it's going to take you. And now to fast forward to today, again, to be able to serve at the state level and at the national level, and in some cases even have some international touches, has been something I would have never, ever thought possible, to be able to write so many success stories with an amazing team at the Sheriff's Office, truly second to none. And our public safety partners in Inoka County are like nowhere else in the nation, and I can say that confidently. The citizens of Inoka County are very fortunate to have that attitude and that spirit of collaboration and cooperation in Inoka County that is like nowhere else. And so I thank you for the recognition today. I thank my team. I thank all of our county departments that we work so well together with, and it's just been an incredible ride and a, as I always say, an honor and a privilege to serve as the elected sheriff of Inoka County. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Sheriff Stewart. My colleagues may have something to say, but I will say personally, it's been an honor to work with you, both as chairman of the Board and when I was just, when I was one, just the regular commissioners here. And every opportunity I had to work with the Sheriff's Office was positive. You have a good team below you that you helped nurture, and I want to thank you for the work that you've done in Inoka County.
Thank you.
Commissioner Brassad, Chair of Public Safety.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Oh, Sheriff Stewart, it's been a ride, but it has been so rewarding and the respect countywide that I see that you've always had, and the way people care about you, and just the honor and pride that you've carried on throughout your career as our sheriff. I'm forever grateful. I am very glad that you've upheld our constitution and our morals and just what's important to Inoka County residents because public safety is a priority here. And I've so enjoyed working with you. I wish you the very best in whatever next chapter this looks like for you, and I would really like you to stay in touch.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gamache.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jim, it's been a while. We've, go back to the and-over-days and, and working with you on the police force that you provided for the great city. We appreciated that a great deal. It saved the residents money, and you guys did such a great job that they're still doing it today, and I think will continue to do it forever. It just shows the leadership that you provided, and it's been a pleasure to work with you as a commissioner as well. I've enjoyed our lunches. We didn't get as many during COVID, but it was always a good time to just talk over what issues that you had and what you needed. So Sheriff, thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
Mr. West.
Thank you for serving. And I would, Mike brought up COVID. I'm very thankful that you survived because I know you were, it was very edgy for you. And I'm thankful for how you handled serving during the, what was it, 2020 year, that horrible year. And thanks for the good work.
Thank you very much.
Well, with that, Sheriff, thank you again.
Thank you.
Next is Tony Palumbo, our county attorney. We recently recognized Tony for 45 years of service to residents of Inoka County. But in case you missed it, I'd like to point out some of his accomplishments. Forty-five years of service to Inoka County. Palumbo started with Inoka County Attorney's Office in October of 1977. Seems to me that was the first year we, what was the '77 Dayton Parks? That must have been, was that Wargo?
Yeah.
He performed duties in all four of the office's legal divisions as an assistant county attorney, criminal, civil, family, and juvenile. Palumbo began serving as county attorney in January of 2011. Throughout his career, Palumbo has advised various county departments on several legal matters, including data practices, real estate, general liability, workers' compensation issues, labor and personnel issues, and more, including conflict of interest. In 2006, Palumbo was named Volunteer of the Year by Lawyers of Professional Responsibility. In 2010, he received the Public Attorney Award of Excellence from the Minnesota State Bar Association. In 2013, he was named a Lawyer of the Year by Minnesota Lawyer. This year, he was given the Douglas K. Amdahl Career Achievement Award for his many years of service to the legal profession. He has a long history of community involvement, serving as past president of the Inoka Ramsey Community College Foundation Board, Board of Directors at Forte Ice Arena, a member of the Inoka Technical College Advisory Committee, actor at Lake Shore Theater and Landmark Center, former board member of the Northeast YMCA, and former coach and judge for the Minnesota High School Mock Trial Program. Palumbo has also donated many meals for fundraising events for several Inoka County charities. I can say that I was the lucky recipient of a number of those meals, and Tony's one heck of a chef. With that, Tony, it's been an absolute honor and pleasure and privilege to work alongside you these years, and look forward to your continued work at Forte Ice Arena. You'll still be working there for us, but for Inoka County. But thank you, and congratulations on an unbelievable career, and I hope your retirement is exquisite.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it.
Further comments? Commissioner Reiner.
Yeah, I just want to mention that I've known Tony for a while, and it's just an honor to, after years of knowing him as, you know, mayor of Lionel Lakes for 10 years, it's just truly an honor to have the opportunity to serve with you and have you sit next to me for a couple of years. Enjoy your retirement, and it's been an honor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate it. Certainly.
And I, Commissioner Gamache.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It has been an honor to serve with you, Tony, and you've done a great job in your entire career, but the county attorneys, you really stepped up. It's always great to have you there, to ask the questions, to bounce some things off you that might be touch and go, but you've got the nice calm demeanor to let us know that we're on the right track. So I just really appreciate that, and I appreciate the friendship, though. Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner West.
Thank you also for serving, Tony, and I would like to remember that in the early days of my commissioner position, you sat in my office and visited quite frequently, helping me to orient, helping to orient me to what I had got myself into. And also, I thank you for a few times when I asked you advice in issues that I had in my own life. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Brassad.
Thank you. I too would just like to thank you for all the times I've called you and reached out and it's like, educate me on what's going on here. you and reached out and it's like, educate me on what's going on here. And you've always been so kind and informational. And just listening to Commissioner Schulte's talk about your background, from the county attorney to an actor to a chef, and the chef part makes me think about the time when we were volunteering for Lee Carlson Center, and we cooked for Bridgeview.
That's correct.
That was so fun. You certainly leave some big shoes to fill, and I wish you the absolute best in your retirement.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate that. I really do.
And I do have a couple of really good attorney jokes, but I don't know if it's appropriate to roast you at a county board meeting.
Everything's fair game at these, I guess, you're sure, but I appreciate it.
Thank you again. And finally, do you have some words for us, Tony?
I'd like to say a few few words at the end, if I could, very briefly. First of all, I want to thank the public for electing me for three times, showing their faith in me as the county attorney. I certainly have appreciated that. And there have been some partnerships as county attorney along the way, one of which is with this board, and I am very thankful to have worked with this board. We have worked well to promote the public good. Not everybody always agrees with decisions made by this board, but you know what? I know every board member, everybody here involved puts their heart into it to do what they believe to be the right thing. And I've been very proud to be the legal advisor to this board, who is absolutely trying to do the right thing and promote the public good. My other elected official, Sheriff Stewart, I want to thank you, Jim. It's been a great partnership, hasn't it? You know, we got elected at the same time. We're going out at the same time. Jim and I have known each other for a lot of years. And our offices have worked well together, I think, because of the partnership that we have had. And to reflect what the sheriff said, it has been, we've got a model here in Anoka County that we can all be proud of, and especially Jim and I, as we go out. I think we leave that part, our offices functioning so well together. In addition to the sheriff, certainly law enforcement officials that I have worked with through the years, I have seen quite a few characters come through these hallowed halls, and I have appreciated, I learned a lot from them, growing up, so to speak, as a lawyer. And I have always, always appreciated their dedication. And also, the other partner, the justice system, are the judges. We have worked very well with the judges through the years, and especially the last few years, trying to put together a justice system through a pandemic and keep this going. Judges have worked extremely hard, and everybody in the justice system, be it probation, be it the county attorney's office, be it law enforcement, they've all worked extremely hard to keep this system going. And I would also like to thank county employees that I have met through these 45 years. I've met quite a few of them, and they have, I've certainly learned from almost all of them, certainly what to do and sometimes what not to do. And they have taught me a lot. And Anoka County Attorney Employees, both past and present, they have been excellent to work with. Every one of them has been dedicated from when I started in 1977 to today. I am so proud to be associated with them. And I will call out a couple of them. Doreen Borntrager, my assistant, she has kept me organized and kept me going here through a lot of turbulent times. Thanks, Doreen. And of course, Marcy Crane, who has retired as a chief deputy, been my close friend and confidant to help get me through and certainly worked with this board. And Brian Franz for filling in. Poor Brian has had to pick up the mantle and carry it for for these last few months, and I'm very thankful. Also, I want to thank my extended family, my sisters, Gina and Mary Ellen, and my cousins, who have been supportive of me throughout my term here. And of course, my immediate family, Jill and the my daughters, for their love and support in getting me through some very tough times here. It's been a great ride for 45 years, I will say that. And I am happy to know that Anoka County citizens are going to be well-served going forward by those that are carrying on their duties. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the board for this recognition.
And finally, today, we say goodbye to our fellow board member, Commissioner Robin West. She started on the Anoka County Board of Commissioners in 2007 as the commissioner who represents most of Blaine, Spring Lake Park, west of Highway 65. She is a true local, having graduated from Anoka High School in 1970, and she and her husband Jay have raised their four sons right here in Anoka County. Her top priorities during her time on the board have been to lobby the legislature to provide funding to bring Highway 65 into the 21st century, promoting economic development in the region, and making decisions and supporting endeavors that improve the lives of county residents. Retirement will allow Commissioner West more time to spend with her family, which includes many grandchildren, and she'll have more time for another leisure hobby, managing her top gardener, her husband, well, when the ground isn't covered in snow anyway. With that, Robin, it has been an absolute joy to serve with you, to get to know you as a friend and a colleague. I can't thank you enough for the work you've done on behalf of your citizens and all the citizens of Anoka County. But aside from the work, thanks for being my friend, and enjoy retirement.
Thank you.
Further comments. Commissioner Look.
Hey, Mr. Chair, thank you. I feel I should I should make a few comments for Robin here, who is otherwise known as Ma. She is affectionately known as Ma because she has, I think, taken it upon herself to mother me a little bit on this board, and I think she's been very proud of that. But I don't know that we could say that we're saying goodbye, because I'm fairly confident that the phone will be ringing on any topic that she may not agree with, that we may be addressing in the future. But, you know, I I do want to thank her for, I know that she's held her nose a few times on some of my initiatives that I've that I've tried to advance on the county board. But thankfully, they've worked out. But at any rate, it's been a pleasure working with you, and I'm not sure how you're going to deal with retirement being the political, shall we say, animal that you are, but I think that you'll you'll definitely be be staying involved. So it's been tremendous working with you. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Matt. And you're right, I probably will be involved. You will, I will probably text you during your meetings.
Commissioner Brassad.
Okay, this one's a little harder for me. When I first got on the board, we made a four-female majority. Wasn't, I think that was like, we made history with that. So that was, that was pretty cool. It was, at the time, Commissioner Silveraja, Robin, myself, and Carol Ledoux. So that that was pretty neat to outnumber the boys on the board for a change. But over the years, I've been able to see firsthand how Robin really represents the people of her district and really cares about them and goes the extra yard to help find resolutions to issues that have come forward. I'm excited for you and Jay for this next chapter, and I have a feeling I'll still continue to see you a little bit. I don't want to make eye contact because I'm not, I just want to get through this. But it truly has been a pleasure. I mean, we've had a really, really good team that care for each other, and like Commissioner Schulte said, have become really, really good friends. It's it's a, we're blessed by being put in this position, and Robin has done a very, very good job.
Thank you, Julie. I'm looking forward to seeing more of you, too.
If I can, I want to thank you for your friendship, too, Robin. It's been a great ride, hasn't it? It's been a lot of fun. And I do want to thank you for that friendship. And I'll see you down in Arizona.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to say. In just a few weeks, or a year later, I guess.
Commissioner Ghamash.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Robin, it's been fun. We've only done eight years together, not the longer time. And I'm sorry, I didn't realize that I broke up the the majority of women on that. Hope you haven't held that against me. But but it's been fun. We've had some good times on different trips around Washington DC and down to St. Cloud and things. But I always appreciated your sense of humor and working with you on projects. So thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Rhonda.
So before the meeting, I told her I wasn't going to say anything because I didn't I'd be able to keep it together. So when I came on the county board, I was kind of the lone vote. And Robin came on and provided that second. She has been a wonderful friend, always encouraging in everything that I've ever set my mind to. She is one of those people who will drop everything to help out a friend, even if it means that even if she has 10 other things to do that evening, somehow or other, she will find time to squeeze it in. That's just the kind of person that she is. I don't know how many thousands of pies she has made for nonprofits around Anoka County in order to help with their fundraising efforts. She is truly, I think, loved by the people in her district. She will show up, and they know who she is because she has been forever present and very, very active in her community in a whole host of ways. And I am so happy for her to have this opportunity to retire and spend time with her family. I always say, life is way too short. So the fact that she is able to take that time, enjoy life, I would just wish her the very best and appreciate her incredible friendship. She has never shied away from difficult issues. When she first came on the county board, there were a number of difficult issues that needed to be tackled. And she was the one that would dig in and go through line item by line item, certain expenditures, and really was looking out for the best interest of the taxpayers. And I just appreciate her diligence in doing that. She also was one of the leaders of the Zayo Project. And I I think that although it didn't necessarily end up reaching households, it did provide that backbone to connect, you know, with 248 government buildings across Anoka County. And it was her leadership in really pushing that and also serving on the state broadband task force as part of that. And I will tell you that she was a visionary in that, in that she saw the internet as a public utility before most of us did. She was talking in those terms back when I was not convinced at all. And so I just want to thank her for being a true visionary, a true leader, and really a true friend. So thank you.
Yeah, I remember that day, I didn't really know you, I knew of you, that you met me in a coffee shop in Blaine, and I asked you, you think I can do this? And I'm not sure you knew for sure, but I'm thankful for the encouragement that you gave me. And I have no regrets.
Well, we were all lucky to have you on the board with us, and we wish you the best in retirement. And you're famous for your pies, so don't forget to drop them off once in a while.
We actually have four due between. Mr. Chairman, we are, tonight is the presentation to our our current nonprofit, which is no
No limitations?
Operation.
No limitations?
And so I'm excited to see that happen tonight. And just thank you so much for the support. I look at us as a team. I did a lot of things, but mostly, we did a lot of things. It's amazing what has been accomplished in the 16 years I've been here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner West. So that's a turnover of fully one-third of the elected officials at the county level. But we're ready then now for 2023. And I thank you all for this meeting today, and I apologize for that one hiccup there towards the end. And I will have the HRA back here in three minutes. We are adjourned.